Welcome to the school board meeting for the Carson City School District. We'll begin with a flag salute by me. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And over the break, we lost one of our staff members, Joe Salazar, who worked at Borderwick Bray. And so we'd like to take a moment of silence to recognize him in memoriam. Thank you. And for those of you who have not heard, there will be service for him on January 19th at 3:00 PM at 3945 Fairview Drive. And so can share that information with other colleagues. And we extend our sympathies to his family and loved ones. We will begin with Agenda Item 2, Adoption of the Agenda as Submitted for Possible Action.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Trustee Walker, seconded by Trustee Green. Do we have any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries. And we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 3, Superintendent's Report for Information Only. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Crossman, members of the Board. Just prior to the Christmas break, we learned that several of our teachers have achieved recognition that is truly outstanding. And we wanted to have an opportunity to bring those teachers in front of the Board to talk about the heights that they have reached in their professional world. So we have with us some staff members who have already obtained National Board certification, and some who have just recently been given this very important certification. I'd like to invite Jennifer Chandler to come forward, and we'll move along that way. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jenny Chandler, and I'm a National Board Certified Teacher in Social Studies. And I have with me tonight Rachel Croft, who is also a Board Certified Teacher serving at Borderwick Bray, who we'll share with you in just a moment. But before we celebrate with our new candidates, we wanted to kind of share with you what National Board Certification is. So with your permission, I would like to read briefly from some publications related to National Board and research about it. "To ensure that all students receive an education that prepares them for post-secondary success in life, the teaching profession needs to be strengthened such that it systematically guarantees high-quality teaching practices. In other professions, such as medicine, engineering, architecture, Board Certification has helped create a culture and expectation of accomplished practice, both within the profession and amongst the public. Professions build this expectation into their preparation and practice development pipelines by design, beginning with a clear vision of what its accomplished practitioners should know and be able to do, and then mapping backwards to ensure that each new practitioner begins their career knowing what achieving Board Certification would mean for their level of practice." And that is what these ladies are here to share with you about tonight. In the professional career continuum for teaching, we start off as student teachers and interns in classrooms, and we seek to get our teacher certification and licensure with a bachelor's degree. We often follow that with a master's degree. And then Board Certification comes beyond that. And so while a master's degree will give you expertise in your content area and a lot of theory related to your area of practice, National Board is very, very practical, and it operates from a standpoint that teachers are already experts in their field, and it fosters that metacognition and reflection that we expect of our students. And through that process, we see teachers grow tremendously. And so I would like to give Rachel Croft, another Board Certified Teacher, a moment to share with you about what these ladies have done to achieve their certification. Thank you. Rachel?
Hello. I'm Rachel Croft, and I'm a National Board Certified Teacher. And my certification area is literacy. There are many certification areas. So the National Board was created for teachers by teachers, and it's a voluntary process. And they go through a, it's a very rigorous process where they complete these four components. And the backbone of National Board are these propositions, kind of like the Hippocratic Oath, perhaps may be a good example. And so the five areas that National Board, their backbone is that teachers are committed to students in their learning, that teachers know their subject matter really well, and they know how to teach that subject matter to students, that they're responsible for managing and monitoring student learning, that they think systematically about their practice. And then the final piece, and this piece is part why I'm working in National Board and helping other teachers go through National Board, is that teachers are members of a learning community. And so we work together and we help each other. Sometimes teaching can be a little bit lonely. You're in your class on your own, and so it's good to have a learning community and that we work together and help each other make our profession the best that it can be. So, Jennifer?
Without the finery?
Yeah. So I'll introduce the three newly certified National Board teachers.
We're so used to calling them candidates.
I know, we're so used to calling them candidates. But now they're National Board Certified Teachers. Lacey Carey.
Hey.
Hi. I am Lacey Carey, and I am now a National Board Certified Teacher. That's exciting to say. My certification is in middle childhood generalist, so it's like ages seven to 12. And I think the Boards demand a very high level of both explanation and, you know, reflection from a teacher. And that really made my career strengthened because so much of the time in the classroom, you are just in the throes of a battle. You know, you have kids with needs all over the place, and you're just kind of fighting to get them what they need and help them learn. And so you rarely have time to kind of step back and think about what's going on. And the Boards really force you to do that in long 14-page narratives. So it was really good for me to kind of take a moment and step back and look at what I was doing as a teacher. What were the decisions that I was making that were affecting students? And did the student data back up those decisions that I was making? And were positive things happening in my classroom? And so even though I'm not writing narratives this year in my teaching because I'm done with the Boards, I definitely am still holding on to that reflection piece and how I think about teaching and, you know, continue to have students grow in my classroom. So I think that's what it meant to me and how it helped me grow as an educator. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. And now we would like to introduce National Board Certified Teacher Pamela Shank.
I'm Pamela Shank, and I have my National Board Certification in middle childhood literacy. And I think I would agree with Lacey. Day to day, we don't have time necessarily to go very deep and go inside ourselves and really analyze to the depth that would probably benefit us and our students as much as possible. And National Boards kind of gave us that outlist to really go deep and connect with our kids on a level that I don't think I had ever done before in that kind of a way. So it really helped me grow as a teacher and to make those connections and my students that much more special to me because of that depth. And it also just reminded me that when times get tough and I'm not feeling as confident that this was a great honor and I worked my butt off to get to this point, and that the numbers that actually made it as National Board Certified Teachers against those who were trying to at this point and haven't yet made it, kind of made me feel like, you know what? I think I did do something well, and I'm doing a good job for my students, and hopefully I will see the improvements because of that. Thank you.
And our third National Board Certified Teacher is Nicole Maderos.
Well, good evening, members of the Board. It is such an honor to be able to speak to you tonight. I just kind of took it from a different, what it means to me to have this certification now. First of all, it's an amazing accomplishment, and I'm really proud of how hard I worked and how well I did. And I know that we all are. And it's made me more reflective in my teaching, and it's energized me to, take me back to when I was that first year in college and my very first professor in that huge auditorium with hundreds of other students. And he said to us, "The one thing you want at the very end, or in the middle, or the beginning of your career is to become National Board Certified." And that always stuck with me. I thought it's just something that was a goal of mine. And I didn't give up. I fought for it and achieved it. So I'm excited to be here and to share that with you guys. So thank you.
So just to kind of give you a heads up about where we're headed with this. This is supported by the NEA nationally and by the NASCA. And so the Teachers Union has embraced this as a way to elevate the profession, and so they have combined with National Boards. These ladies took a battery of six exams that cover the entire span of their content areas. They completed a component where they focused on student writing and designed differentiated interventions to improve student writing. They videotaped and videotaped and videotaped, because you have to submit video evidence, on how to do small group and large group discussion at a rigorous level with their age students. And then they worked with how you take data, determine where you're weak as a teacher, grow yourself, plan an intervention for where kids are weak, try it out, and then reflect upon its effectiveness. So it is a tremendous amount of work. They've spent billions of Saturdays, all of us together, working and reading. And Rachel and I serve as what is called candidate support providers. We work through a grant and through RPDP. And so we currently have a Carson cohort of five candidates. They're in process right now. And Rachel works out with the Rurals in Churchill County, and she also has a group. And we have another cohort down in Douglas and a big one in Washoe County. And so we are super proud and excited to see Carson teachers step up and set the pace. The national pass rate for this, if you are involved in a cohort that supports you, is 43%. Carson has a pass rate of 98%. So ladies, we are proud of you. Congratulations.
Jennifer, how many of our teachers are nationally Board Certified?
Seven. We have seven in the district.
And I know we have some that are going through it now. There's five more going through now.
Five more, five to six more in the process.
Yeah. Okay. How did, sorry, I just one question. I mean, we talk a lot about the demands on teachers already. So number one, taking on this undertaking, I think goes without saying, it was a lot of extra work, so good for you. But how does it compare? I mean, we talk about what we're trying to do in this district with the learner-centered model and all the changes we're doing. Do the two, what we're trying to do in the national certification, complement each other? Or do you find we're in different, you know, where are we at?
I think the metacognition process, right? You hear all these ladies talking about, "I am now deep within myself because now I reflect upon everything." It's what we're trying to foster in our students, right? How are you learning? How do you know? What are you learning? Those types of things. I think that the new component four is new. It's different than what Rachel and I went through. Mirrors what we've done here with data and across the, kind of the educational system where you take the data and you have to analyze it. I feel that Carson teachers tend to not find it easy, but tend to navigate that particular component more proficiently than some other places that are still learning to collect the data. So I do feel that they have some places where they overlap.
And I just wanted to say, I know how much work is involved with that. So I'm really proud of all three of you, and, you know, particularly Lacey, who started, you know, as a new teacher, who really started as a teacher leader at Fritsch. And so it doesn't surprise me. So I'm proud of all of you, and congrats.
Thank you and congratulations. And my guess is you were really pretty fabulous teachers before, and anything that is making you better and feel, do a better job is just absolutely awesome for the kids in this district. So thank you. And I know, Mrs. Carey, that my Nate wanted you when you moved to Carson Middle School again, and you went to sixth grade when he was in seventh. There's still chance, if you move to eighth grade next year, for him to get you. Okay.
Sounds like he's gonna track you down.
He might. Okay, Mr. Stokes, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I too just want to add my congratulations because as long as I've been in education, I know that this really is the pinnacle of expertise. And I know it's very challenging, and only a small number of teachers across the United States actually become Board Certified. And so congratulations. I know how difficult it is, and we appreciate having you as part of our staff. Carrying on, Madam President, members of the Board, just a couple of reminders. One, this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM is the Once Annual Audit Dinner, which has been resurrected and brought back, and we're looking forward to that. So if you would like to attend, we'll begin the dinner at 6:00 PM at the Carson High School Culinary Arts Classroom. And if you'll get ahold of either Renee, or me, or AJ Fueling, we can pass along your reservation if you'd like to attend. Also, on January the 15th, your financial disclosure statements are due. And I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that. And you can do that by going online to the Secretary of State's webpage. And for my last bit of business, if I could, oh wait, there's one more thing. We are having a Bond Oversight Committee meeting on the 18th of January, and that will begin at 11:30 at the District Office Boardroom. And so with that, Madam President, would you join me at the rostrum, please? It has been tradition in our school district, at the end of each Board President's time in office, that we make a presentation. And so it gives me a pleasure to provide to Laurel Crossman this nice little plaque that recognizes her achievement for her year as our president. It's been my pleasure to work with her. I don't know of anyone that's as busy as she is as a mom and as the president of our Board and someone who volunteers much of her time in our schools. And it's been my honor to work with her and to chat through issues that we have and to learn from her. And so Laurel, thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Superintendent Stokes, if I could pardon my interruption here. I wanted to share some good news as well. I forgot to tell you this, Mr. Stokes, but today was the first meeting of the UNR Principal Preparation Program. It's in Cohort Two. Five out of the 20 teachers who want to become school administrators came from Carson City. And it is the maiden voyage for us to be collaborating with UNR in a cohort fashion, meaning these 20 now teachers will be administrators in the near future, in a couple of years. They will go through the program together as a cohort. So everything from school finance to HR to all the things that administrators need to learn, in theory, will be disseminated and taught. We have two principal mentors, Tasha Fuson and Lee Connolly, who are going to be the first Carson City principal mentors as well. They're getting a little bit of a bump from UNR to be mentors for our mentees. And they will also mentor some of the Washoe people. So I'm very excited to announce that new collaboration with UNR. And it's happening today. So Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Four, Board Reports and Board Member Comments for Information Only. Let's start with Sienna Fletcher for Pioneer High School.
Thank you, members of the Board. Welcome back to school for second semester. Mr. Corbett is starting a 3D Engineering Club. Students who are interested, please contact Mr. Corbett with additional information. JAG will be celebrating the success of their food drive with a pizza party tomorrow during lunch. The ski club will be going cross-country skiing on Friday, January 12th. Interested students need to see Mr. Corbett to pick up the field trip forms. There will be a rock sport climbing field trip on Friday, January 19th. Students interested should contact Mr. Laurien for the permission slips. Remember that there is no school on Monday in celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Thank you, and this concludes the activities, events, and announcements for Pioneer High School.
Thank you, Sienna. And for Carson High School, we'll have Giselle Nava Rivera.
Thank you, members of the Board. So tomorrow, which is January 10th, there will be a Real Life of College meeting at 6:00 PM in the Carson High School Library for seniors. And yeah, that's it. Yeah. Yeah, and good to be back. Ecstatic.
Thank you for that report, and welcome back to school to everyone, too. Trustee Karini. Okay. Trustee Cassiopoe.
Just a few quick things. January 18th is Options Night at Carson High School. Starts at 6:00 PM, and they'll start off with the AP discussion. It'll let the students know, basically let the students know what the AP program's about, the Jump Start program's about. And it's good information. The AP portion starts at 6:00. The Jump Start portion starts at 7:00 in the evening in Senator Square. And as I tell the kids each year, who are not sure which direction they want to go, there is no wrong decision. They're both fantastic programs. Just find out what works best for you and what fits your interest. January 12th, which, so it started already, well, almost, January 12th through February 14th, I'm rushing through January, spring sports signups. You can do this online. Go to the Carson High School site under Register My Athlete. You could do it that way, and if you have any questions, you can contact the Athletic Department. And then beginning January 11th is Dress for Success. It'll start the first Thursday, which is January 11th, and then it'll be every second Thursday of each month for students who, just to get them thinking about what dressing for success means, you know? If you want to be a Wall Street banker, you probably don't have to walk around in a $4,000 suit. But, you know, think about how you want to be perceived and what, you know, how you dress, or how, I should say, how you dress, you know, puts you in that position with other people. So anyway, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Walker.
No report.
Trustee Swirzik.
Not tonight.
Trustee Wilkie.
Just a reminder that our next NASB meeting is February 2nd and 3rd, and there will be Professional Development on the 3rd from 8:30 till noon. And as it gets closer, I'll let you know at the next meeting exactly what that is.
Isn't the 2nd just the Executive Committee meeting?
Yeah, just professional, but anybody can attend.
Okay.
But you just can't, you don't have any voting rights. But you can attend and listen. Or participate, Mike's participated. He's been there. He's participated. Just say you're just sitting there and listen. But there will be Professional Development on the 3rd from 8:30 till noon.
Actually, usually I think my name tag says Laurel Crossman when I'm at those meetings.
Trustee Green.
Yeah, I wanna, since I was the sole trustee that didn't report their annual training, I wanted to address that for y'all. A bit of it is just personal for me. I obtain over 200 hours a year of training through, between my job and the union stuff. I'm the secretary for my local International Association of Firefighters. I've negotiated, this summer I negotiated our third contract that I've been a part of. I'm the secretary treasurer for state professional firefighters in Nevada. I have an ungodly amount of training, and my personal belief is that the voters decide our competency for these positions. So, you know, however they feel about it, but as far as I'm concerned with the, I could, I have well more than six hours indefinitely under those categories. But I guess fact of the matter is, I was just mostly lazy because I didn't care to put forth the effort to send it forward. Because quite frankly, what they can't encapsulate is how many hours we spend at sites, how much work we do on this board. And what I hope you all know of me is the effort that I put in and I believe my competency. So with regard to that, just so you know, it was a conscientious decision of mine. And quite frankly, during what I feel are, were most of our board trainings in the last year, I was actually legitimately at some other functions during that time that I felt I got more valuable personal training out of. So that's just the way it goes, though. So thank you.
And I will report for Carson Middle School. Mr. Sadler said he is happy to report that Carson Middle School students and staff achieved high, achieving academic performance during the first semester of the school year. They surpassed their school-wide goal of 90% of all students passing all classes. So he said, "Way to go, Team CMS." And also, the volleyball season has started, so keep your eyes open to the calendar for when there's home volleyball games. And I was going to mention the financial disclosure reporting on January 15th. So don't forget that. And...
Because if you do, you do get fined. Let me tell you.
Yeah. And then you have to write a letter requesting a waiver of the fine if you, my first year, I totally forgot about it.
Because if you look at the law, we really, it's a $5,000 limit, and we make $4,800. So that was my premise, but that didn't go over well, so just to let you know.
Just disclose and just do.
Just keep in mind for new board members, there's two, there's two forms you have to fill out that are online. There's a financial disclosure and the contributions form. I got caught one year where I did one but missed the other. But I went in there and snivelled, and they waived it.
Yeah, they realize we're not really professionals, and we don't have, I mean, we're professionals, but we don't have a vast staff supporting us in these positions like some of the other people. So they usually do work with you, but it's best just to be on time and get it all filed. Okay, so I think that concludes all Board Reports and member comments. Do we have any others? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Five, Discussion and Possible Action on Election of Officers of the Board of Trustees, including Board President, Vice President, and Clerk for the ensuing year. For possible action. We'll go ahead and I guess open the floor to nominations.
I would like to nominate Ron Swirzik as President.
You make nominations, he can accept or decline the nomination, and then you ask for other nominations.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Green for President.
Okay. So do we have any other nominations? Miss, Trustee Swirzik, do you accept the nomination?
Based upon the discussion, yes, I would accept. Yes, I would accept the nomination. Any discussion.
Okay. Trustee Green, do you have, you accept the nomination? Okay, so if they both accept the nomination, then we take a vote. So should I just do a panel vote? Okay. So, or do we, should we have discussion before, I suppose? Because it's not really a motion, but...
You don't need a motion. You could either go down the line and ask for individual votes, or you can ask all in favor of one candidate and all in favor of the other candidate. Because if there's more than one nomination, it might be hard for the recorder to hear. It might be better to just go down the line. It might be better to just go down the line.
Okay.
I just have a question. Since there's two nominations, I mean, is it possible to have a discussion about the, you know, what the two, yeah?
I don't see anything that would prohibit that discussion, if anyone would like to discuss.
I guess I'll kind of explain why I'm breaking from tradition, because usually we do, we just keep going, and normally that's okay. But I had to go to the State Board of Education meeting, and I had to report on our trustees and our training. And I have a hard time saying that we were 6-1, and the one that didn't do it was the president, because he didn't feel, he had his own personal reasons for not doing it. That was really hard. And I have to go to the interim educational committee and do the same thing. I worked really hard on making sure, working with the legislative group with NASB, to make sure that we weren't going to be appointed. Because to me, that takes away the voters' and the taxpayers' rights in this board, because we spend taxpayers' money. And if they don't get to elect us, I think that is just not the right thing to do. So I worked with a lot of people, and this was the condition we made, was the first and third year, we would do at least six hours of training. And it's not, I don't think, asking a lot, and Ryan did have a lot of training, but he didn't report it to me, and he feels that that's a personal thing for him, not to do that, which is fine. But two sessions ago, because of Washoe's board and the way they performed, we almost went appointed. And it keeps coming back. And so this was a concession that we made and said, "Okay, so you want us to have training." We all get professional development. We all go visit the schools. We do a lot more out of the box. But because it's an NRS now, we have to do that. Ryan doesn't feel strongly about that. I want Ryan to go to the legislature this next session, and I want him to tell these people why he doesn't think that this is the right thing to do, and why we shouldn't be held to certain standards that other elected officials aren't. And I think he makes a lot of good points. Unfortunately, it's a law, and we had to do this. And so that's my strong feeling, and I hate, I like how we have the succession, I think it works well. It's just in this instance, I just don't think that being president of the school board, you get to make, you can have those opinions, but I don't think that it makes for a good board practice. I think you're an example to the board, and I think that things like a Nevada law needs to be followed. And the other thing was, Ryan missed a lot of meetings last year. You know, and that's hard, too. So, but I know that he goes into the schools and he does a lot of stuff there. He answers his emails from constituents. I think he's a good board member. I'm just not comfortable with him being president next year.
On that same notion, it's a law, right? We're subject, it's Indiana RS, no, I know that. Is, there's nothing in place, though, that says, "Okay, if this, then this, if you don't achieve this"? What are the ramifications? The only ramification is, they could possibly, that could be an argument for the legislators to say, "You know what? We're going to make boards appointed as opposed to elected."
That's the only...
That's where we're at now.
That's the only consequence, and that was another thing that Ryan said, is he doesn't, there are no consequences. But the consequence is, we may lose our choice to be elected. That's, and that's the only consequence, and I think that's why they didn't put consequences on it. Number one, they didn't want all the other paperwork that would go with that. And they want to go, I know that the Assembly Leader, that's the first thing he's going to look at, because we worked with him on this bill, is he's going to look, and they have already asked us at the interim, on the 18th, I have to go before my NA double A meeting and go report to them, and that's exactly what they want. They want me to tell me what counties did not fulfill it and by how many. And there's quite, I mean, Landor, they had five members, and they haven't put in their reports, though, but only one ever came to a NASB training. But they can get training other places, and Ryan could have used some of his training that he had. He just didn't want to, he didn't report it for what he, you know, for the reasons he told you guys. So that's, that's the only reason, that, not being here. But I know that Ryan would be, would be, is a good board member. I just think that president is a step above, and you're held to a different standard. And I discussed this with Ryan beforehand. This wasn't anything Ryan didn't know I wasn't going to do. I let him know straight up that that's how I felt, so.
It's only two people, so that doesn't, it wasn't a quorum. So do we have any other discussion? Or are we ready to take a vote? You guys are kind of looking at me blankly, so I'm not sure if you're ready to vote.
I'm just thinking, Ron had said, you know, he accepted, he accepted the nomination pending, not pending discussion, but with discussion. I didn't know if you had anything to add, from you personally, your position and your interest.
I accepted. I accepted the nomination and would be glad to do it. But again, it comes back to the discussion of the board, of which way the board wanted to go. Okay.
It's a, as you can all appreciate, it's a compromising position to even speak for yourself with a nomination thing, too. This is why I like the union stuff, because we handle stuff just a little different sometimes. But I guess with regard to attendance, I did make some life changes over the last three or four months, but y'all wouldn't know that, but to fix some issues I had with that. So, I don't know. Schedule-wise, I'm better. But either way, that's neither here nor there. It's the same thing, you know, I certainly understand and appreciate Stacy's perspective, whether I agree or not. But also, I take it down, you know, it's like, I don't know, it's two-fold. It's like either being on the school ground and not getting picked for team. Or, you know, there's this component, too, like, you always talk about, you'd rather lose a game, like, because you weren't as good as the other team. Or I'd rather, like, not have something because of, I didn't have the competency to do it. There's some nuance, or what I feel is a nuance, or some what may be perception, that is harder to choke down just on a personal level, but y'all shouldn't do anything because of how I'm going to feel either. So just to let you all know, I, whatever, I understand. But in my opinion, I just think it's all contingent on what might be a perception, so.
And I would just, having been around for the last couple sessions of the legislature, when that, every, almost every bill submitted includes a bill to appoint trustees of school boards. I think that this compromise that was made at the last session to require the training, and it's not a nuance, it's not an opinion, it is the law that we're required to do, and I think that as a board, we expect our school district and our employees and Mr. Stokes to follow all of the laws that NRS puts down upon the school district. Even if we disagree with some of them, we still comply, we still do all, school districts are still required to do all the read-by-three requirements, even if they don't get any funding for it. So to me, that is important, and it's, it's a disregard for what the law is and what we're required to do. And I understand that there's the desire to, I guess, consciously object to it, but I don't think the position of the board president should, shouldn't, should be someone who's not following the law that we've been required to do, and there's ample opportunity to achieve that training. So that would be mine. Are you guys ready to vote? Okay, Trustee Karini.
Ron.
Okay, Trustee Cassiopoe. Trustee Walker.
For no other reason than just because it's common protocol, I'd say Ryan.
Trustee Swirzik.
I'll hold my vote until end.
Okay. Trustee Wilkie.
Ron.
Trustee Green.
I'll vote for Ryan.
Okay, I will vote for Ron.
Okay, I'll vote for myself.
Okay. Congratulations, President Swirzik. And I think, I think the other thing, I guess, that's important to note is, it's been a practice, but it's not a protocol to, and it's always an open nomination for president. It's been a habit, but it's not required by our bylaws that the next president be the vice president. It's always open for open nominations every year in our bylaws.
And we're one of those that does, I mean, Washoe, they have a different president and vice president every year. And so, you know, we changed the superintendent's evaluation because it wasn't working, so if this isn't, you know, this is wide-open nominations.
I'd just like to add, you know, I've thought about this for a little while, and I'm, I share similar opinions that I think the training, if it's a law, you should be doing it or whatnot. And where I was struggling with this is, I know how much time and effort Ryan puts into the school district, and I appreciate that. I have a lot of respect for Trustee Swirzik as well. I would like to see in the future, as a school board, you know, it's a law with no teeth, essentially, but I'd like to see as a school board, if we can put a policy in place, I'd be more comfortable as a school board, deviating from, to a degree, deviating from what we've been doing. So can we say that in a policy, in a future policy, that to become president, you know, you have to meet X, Y, and Z?
I think this is jumping into a future agenda topic, more so than the agenda item that we're on.
So I'll save that to the end of the meeting and bring that up.
Yeah, because I kind of feel like we're...
Yeah.
Going into deep water. Okay, so I will, I have a mallet or whatever gavel to hand you, Trustee Swirzik, but you can go, President Swirzik, but you can go ahead and take over the meeting.
So on Agenda Number 5, I'll entertain nominations for Vice President.
I'll move that we nominate Trustee Wilkie as the Vice President of the board.
I accept.
Any further nominations? Okay, is everybody, all in favor? Okay. And now we'll have nominations for Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Mike Walker.
I'll second that. Did anyone second him, sorry?
Well, any further nominations for Clerk? And Mike, will you accept the Clerk position? Okay. So all in favor? Okay. Okay, going on to Agenda Item Number 6, Discussion and Possible Action on Designation of a Day, Place, and Time for Regular Meetings of the Board of Trustees for the ensuing year. And I think in your packet, under the executive, we've got Item Number 6, Designation of Meetings, and it's on the 2nd and 4 Tuesday for the open. So if anybody wants to make a motion, go for it.
I'll make a motion. I move that, that except, as otherwise noted, due to special circumstances, the Carson City School District Board of Trustees designate the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of the month as the regular meeting days, 6:00 PM for legally allowed closed sessions, and 7:00 PM for open session, in the Sierra Room of the Carson City Community Center, 851 East Williams Street, Carson City, Nevada.
Second. We have a motion in three seconds. So, okay, Mike, okay, Mike Walker is the second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just what I always do every meeting. We keep having meetings going until 11 o'clock. So is 7:00 still, I know, like, we've talked about, that's how it usually goes, but is there any opportunity to have them? Because 11 o'clock is just, we're not, I don't think we're functioning well as a board, so I don't know if we need to have, keep doing more workshops, or...
Like, are you thinking maybe start at 5:00 for closed sessions and 6:00 for open sessions?
Oh, that doesn't work either, huh? I don't know. I'm just putting it out there and seeing.
Mike, I just thought Ron's, Mike was on. I guess my suggestion would be, we have time limits on these items, and I think that one of the things that maybe Mr. Stokes could work with staff on is really keeping those presentations to those time constraints with time for questioning, because, you know, obviously, we're going to all have questions, and that's why you're presenting to the board. But I think that maybe if we kind of watched that a little bit more conservatively, that might help a little bit. And I know the teachers and staff would appreciate that as much as we would.
I would offer, too, that we have at least three days when the agendas are published, and if there are discussion items or questions that you might have prior to the meeting, maybe we could cover some of those things by staff contact to you. We could identify those questions when we make the presentation so that the whole board gets, or we could follow up with a memo to the whole board, so that everybody gets the information. And I know that sometimes information or questions don't arise until you actually have the presentation, so I get that, too. So just offering that as another way that maybe we can work together to try to keep our agenda items tight.
And maybe if, when the presentators say that they're going to take 30 or 45 minutes, maybe that's when we make it a workshop at 6:00.
Yeah, I like the idea of, I'd have a hard time starting too much earlier. It's sometimes hard to get here at 7:00 with my work schedule. But what I'd rather see is, rather than starting earlier, I'd rather see, and that's one way to do it, is holding people to a certain time limit, but capping these meetings at a certain time. Because I don't mind the occasional 11:00 meeting, I'm not a huge fan of it, but I don't mind it, but what I'm more concerned about is, for our vast audience, you know, I mean, the reality is, if a teacher or somebody wants to watch these meetings, it's tough for them to stay up till 11:00, 11:30 at night, when they've, some of them are at the schools at 7:30 in the morning.
And we've had presenters that had to be here till 10:00, 10:30, and then had to get up in the morning and teach, so that's...
And we've had some presenters that come from out of town. So anyway, my thought would be really trying to be diligent about shortening, you know, trying to cap these meetings if we can.
I'm good with that.
And as president, I'll work with the superintendent to make sure we're on first.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Excuse me, before we give this, any comments to the public? Okay, we're all good. Okay, Agenda Item Number 7, Discussion and Possible Action on Annual Adoption and, like, we have...
The person to the right is always under...
And Reaffirmation of Existing Bylaws, Policies of the Board of Trustees.
That's a seasoned board member.
I'll go ahead. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the adoption and reaffirmation of existing bylaws and policies.
Second. Motion in a second, any comments to the public? Are you done? All in favor? Aye. Go. Go. Item Number 8. And Mr. Winklevoss, this law has to be read in the record.
Ideally, yes.
Yes.
All right, Agenda Item Number 8. Discussion and Possible Action on Annual Authorization for the Carson City School District to Apply for and Manage Federal, State, Foundation, and Private Funding, including but not limited to, A, Programs Authorized Under the Every Child Succeeds Act of 2015 to Include Titles 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8; B, Public Law 94-142, the Individuals with Disability in Education's Act; C, Public Law 109-270, the Carl Perkins Vocational Education Act; D, Race to the Top; E, State Free Kindergarten; F, Nutrition, Fresh Fruits and Vegetables; G, Community Development Black Grants; H, SB 405, Zoom English Learner Funding; I, At-Risk Counseling Services; J, State Career and Technical Education; K, College and Career... at-risk counseling services; J, state career and technical education; K, college and career readiness; Sub 1, Read by Grade 3; and M, the Great Teachers and Leaders Fund, the designation of Mr. Richard Stokes, Mrs. Sue Kima, Mrs. Valerie Dockery, and Dr. Stephen Prader as the authorized representatives is recommended for poss, okay, possible action. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. All of these items that were just read represent federal, state, and local grant funds that we receive and that we use in the operation of the school district. By your recognition of these funds this evening, it allows us to continue applying for and using these monies in our operations.
How many more did we add to this list from last year? Do we know?
Well, I would say that from the last legislative session, some of the significant funding exists in our English learner funding, our Read by Grade 3, Great Teachers and Leaders Fund, and College and Career Readiness. Those particular items were big winners for us and have allowed us to do some amazing things in the school district.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees designate Mr. Richard Stokes, Mrs. Susan Kima, Mrs. Valerie Dockery, and Dr. Stephen Prader as the authorized representatives of any and all federal and state grants.
Second.
Mr. President, I apologize.
Let's do it again. We have a motion and a second. There's no public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number nine, discussion of possible action on the appointment of trustees to serve in various committees and associations, including the following for the ensuing year. Okay, we'll just go down these, and the clerk, could you just make a note?
Yes.
Who's volunteering? Okay, we'll start with the director for the Nevada Association of School Boards.
I'd like to remain on there if possible, because I was appointed to the English Mastery Council two years ago, but that was only for the second half of one year, so they redid it last year for two years, or three years. So anyway, I still have to go to the English Mastery Council as a director, so.
It's not as a director, it's a...
Be representative.
Representative, so you don't have to be a director.
Oh, okay, I thought that was what it was, but I'm happy to keep doing it.
That's like I'm on PIA, or the Parental Development, and that's not because...
Okay, Laurel is, would like to continue. Any others that would like to jump in? Okay, so we'll appoint Laurel as a director of the Nevada Association of School Boards. The alternate director on the Nevada Association of School Boards.
I'm willing to remain in that capacity.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mike Walker, member of the Carson City Parks and Recreation Committee.
I've been on that, been part of the Parks and Rec Committee for several years now, and I'm happy to keep doing it, but if somebody else wants a chance, I'm okay stepping aside as well.
Anybody else? Harry Nun, so we've got Joe on the Carson City Parks and Recreation Committee. Okay, the debt management commission, I'm on that. I've been on it for a year. I'd be glad to continue on that. In the partnership Carson City, I'd very much like to continue as that. But if anybody else wants to jump in there, just let me know.
So you forgot the vote.
What is a debt management? What does that do?
We take a look at, to make sure that the city does not exceed the debt limit on anything that's been proposed.
Oh, okay. So city and school and all that.
Yeah, we look at all of that. And the next meeting is in February, and A.J., I haven't told him yet, but he's going to be on that agenda, because we missed one back in August. So we need to get something officially on from Carson City's debt management. Anyway.
Oh, was it?
Okay.
Just the opposite.
Legislative liaison?
I'd be happy to continue that.
Okay, Stacy. Representative to Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee?
Joe was also a legislative liaison, are you good with that?
Oh, I think I was. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, so there's two. Okay.
It's a good year, it's an off year.
But there will be interim legislative committee member, or meetings, that sometimes result in a build-out draft request and sometimes law, so.
And I will be at those.
Okay. Representative to Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee?
I'm good with it.
I'm fine unless, I'm fine unless somebody else wants to get on a committee. We didn't do much this year with starting.
Okay, representative, okay, that's Ryan and Laurel. Representatives to, or to Superintendent's School Naming Committee?
I'll be happy to serve if you'd like.
And then representatives to Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee?
I'll stay on it unless somebody wants to.
Okay, Brian. Representative to Carson City's School Foundation?
That would be you.
Yeah, okay.
By bylaws, that's you.
Okay. Representative to Wellness Committee?
Do we still have a wellness committee now that we put it in the PLCs?
We have not continued in that since how it is part of the community PLC, part of our strategic plan. So those folks, if part of this body would join with the rest of the community when we meet at our community PLCs.
So has anybody been going to the PLCs and being in the wellness part?
No, but it's...
But if you want to do that, Don.
But it is important. I know we went through the nutrition part of this, but the social, emotional part, there's some major things that need to be addressed.
And isn't the Wellness Committee one of the committee appointments required by our bylaws? Because I know...
So, so Don, if you're interested, that would be great.
Sure.
Sure, I accept that.
Representative to Student Attendance Review Board?
I actually enjoyed that. I'd like to stay on that.
Brian, anybody else want to jump in? Representative on the Emergency Operations Development Committee?
I'm currently on that committee. I'd be happy to remain unless...
Don, did you want to join a second committee, or? Sure. Now, down below here, you had put me on the Review Committee and Wellness Committee. Is that, are those two, are those two committees, or is that a separate committee than the Wellness? Which one?
That's from last year.
Right, that I currently sit on. So, super...
So, so Don's on the Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee and the Wellness Committee.
Right, so I was already on the Wellness, which I'll...
Yeah, so we messed up, so you...
Be happy to stay on those.
Okay.
And if someone, someone wanted to give one up, I'd be happy to take another one as well.
Okay, representative on the Emergency Operations Development Committee? And that's Mike.
Which one, Mike?
It's totally up to you.
Mike's on two.
Well, Mike's go to...
Do you want to keep the policy review?
Yeah, I haven't, I don't think we've done anything without anything, right. I'd be happy to do one that's a little more active. I'd be happy.
Do that emergency management, that one?
Sure, I can do that.
And then, Mike, that'll give you just the two.
So, I'm just a little confused. Who's doing the board policy review committee?
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have the clerk of the board read these back right now.
I think, I think we added Don because he came on.
Yeah, did I drop off?
No, we just added.
We just didn't mean...
Because he didn't have any committees.
Okay, so, so far we have Laurel as the director of the Nevada Association of School Boards, Mike Walker as the alternative director of Nevada Association of School Boards, Joe as the member of the City Parks and Recreation Committee, Ron will remain on both the Debt Management Commission and Partnership Carson City. Legislative liaison, we have Stacy and Joe. Representative for the Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee, we have Ryan, Laurel, and possibly Don. Mike Walker as the representative of the Superintendent's School Naming Committee, Ryan as the representative of the Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee, Ron as representative for the School Foundation, Don as representative to the Wellness Committee, Ryan as representative to the SARB Committee, and Don as representative on the Emergency Operations Development Committee.
And if we only want two on the board policy review committee, I could go ahead and withdraw from that if Don and Ryan would like to do that.
So we'll leave it as Don and Ryan and take you off.
Okay.
Make a motion.
All right.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the following appointments. Would it be appropriate for me to say as read previously? As read previously?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the public? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Decession and possible action on the appointment of trustees to serve as individual liaisons to schools within the district. With this, I would ask the clerk of the board to keep track of this. Okay, we will go forward with Fritsch Elementary School. Anyone else want to be on, okay. Borderwick Bray Elementary School?
I'm currently working with them. I'll be happy to stay.
Okay, Mike. Fremont Elementary School?
I'm currently working with them also.
Okay, Mike. Mark Twain?
I'd like to do Mark Twain.
Empire Elementary School?
No, I'm happy to stay, or if somebody else wants.
Okay, we have Ryan. Seeliger?
I've been doing Seeliger. I'd like to stay. I live in that neighborhood.
Okay, Carson Middle School?
I think Laurel and I share it, and I'd be happy to stay.
Laurel and Don. Okay, Eagle Valley Middle School? Ron? I'd like to, I'd just like to stay. All right, Carson High School?
That's me, and I'm happy to stay. I like that.
Pioneer, that's me, and I would be happy to stay. Anybody else want it?
Yeah, I don't have a school, can I have one?
Well, Stacy, yes. Stacy, gosh. Stacy, you're Pioneer. Okay. The Bray Building, Abastory Early Childhood Center?
I had that, and I'm happy to keep that. And again, if anybody else wants it, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Mr. Clerk, would you please read this back?
Yes. We have Laurel as a representative for Fritsch Elementary School, Mike as representative for Borderwick Bray Elementary School, and Fremont Elementary School, Ryan as representative for Mark Twain Elementary School, and Empire Elementary School, Don as representative for Seeliger Elementary School. Laurel and Don are sharing the responsibilities for Carson Middle School. Ron will be the representative for Eagle Valley Middle School. Joe will be the representative for Carson High School. Stacy will be the representative for Pioneer High School, and Joe will be the representative for the Borderwick Bray and Abastory Early Childhood Center.
Okay, entertaining a motion.
I move that we accept the previous names for those schools.
Motion, second.
I'll second.
Brian's second. Okay, any comments from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Good evening, President Swirzik, trustees, administration. I'm Loretta Marson, VP for CESA, and I just want to say Happy New Year for the beginning of 2018. Just a report on CESA's food drive. We had a lot of food. I just want to thank everyone who participated in that. We were able to donate to five families this year. They were very grateful. And a big shout out to Pioneer, the maintenance people, and Transportation. They really did an outstanding job to get us our food. So, once again, thank everybody who helped us in that. Thanks.
Okay, get this. Seeing there's probably not going to be public comment, but in the event there is, would anyone like to come forward? And I won't read into the record all the requirements. Okay, no one's here to give public comment. Going on to agenda item number 13, possible discussion of possible action to eliminate CCSD policy 815, software copyright, second reading. Raymond?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'm here for the second reading and possible termination of policy 815. As mentioned during the first reading, the intent of policy 815 has been absorbed into policy 218 and Regulation 218, so the board will maintain oversight through policy 218. So I guess I just need a yes, no?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve January 9, 2018 as the eliminated date on CCSD policy 815, software copyright.
Comments from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 14, presentation on the final 2016-17 Nevada School Performance Framework NSPF results of the Carson City School District, including an explanation of the new NSPF model of school district accountability. For discussion only, Sue Kima and Dr. Ricky Medina.
Thank you, President Swirzik, members of the board. The, let me just get settled here. The Nevada School Performance Framework has moved from no child left behinds model of adequate yearly progress, which we so fondly remembered, to a new format called the Nevada School Performance Framework. NSPF, which is the acronym for Nevada School Performance Framework, has, is integrated with, has, how can I say, it has been developed with a lot of other elements in mind. For example, the NSPF is an integrated part of the Nevada School Performance Framework for our teachers, for the Nevada educator performance framework. It's more closely aligned with the teacher evaluation system. The other thing is, if you're looking on at this, at the screenshot here, this is a state picture of what they were thinking of, or what they believe this new model is to be. They used this triangle when they were presenting to the State Board of Education earlier this year. They believe their goal is to be the fastest improving state in the nation. They wanted an accountability system that had more of a holistic approach. We know that adequate yearly progress was... We know that adequate yearly progress was built on proficiency. The model that I'm about to show you this evening has school climate, chronic absenteeism, college and career readiness in there. The state also believes that this model, this new model, gives better information, which I believe it does too, to our schools to be able to improve and provides parents with more information. And it holds high expectations still for our schools. It doesn't have a, doesn't give schools a pass and it doesn't give schools a reset button. If you remember adequate yearly progress, if you didn't make it one year, but you made it the next year, you kind of were on hold till the third year. And if you made it two years in a row, then you're okay. You start it over. But if you didn't make it, then you're in needs of improvement. And the state has figured out that that old system of labeling schools as pass or fail has not really improved schools in the matter that they wanted, in the way that they wanted them for the state of Nevada. So this presentation tonight is about the model. I'll use our data so that we are making that official too. But it's about the model so that I feel that the first part of this is to make sure that you understand, in case you get questions from the public, what is the model about? What are we looking at? What is the state looking at when they're evaluating our schools? So for elementary, for the school performance indicators for our elementary schools, you can see that it's academic achievement, which is what the old AYP model was built on. It validates growth, English language proficiency, because we know that when students pass the access with a poor 4.5, they can compete with their peers. It also addresses opportunity gaps. Opportunity gaps meaning that in the old AYP system, the state raised its scores from the beginning of AYP to the end of AYP. The state did raise the scores. Our district raised our scores. But what happened with some of our subgroups, our groups that weren't meeting the bar? What happened is the scores went up, it just went up like this and never went up where we closed the gap. And in that first triangle, you saw that it said that it meant all students. They mean all students. And in the old AYP system, we were working on those students that were really close to the bar, getting them over to the bar. But we need to make sure we're addressing all students. So that opportunity gap is last year's students who didn't make, didn't pass the assessment with a three or a four for the S-BAC and comparing those students who now passed it this year. So it's comparing one year's growth to the one year's, the group's performance from year to the next.
I just have a quick question, Mrs. Kima. In the meeting we had gone to this summer, I think Trustee Green and I were there. The Department of Education said they were going to count third grade twice. Is that still part of that opportunity gaps or wherever that?
Where is?
Fit into it? Is it still?
Yes. So what's happened since this last summer, when the State Department presented, they realized that there was some miscalculations in the data. So they stepped back, regrouped, and then they came out with our formal and our final star ratings. And what they, and so the state then re-presented in December to our principals' meeting what I'm presenting to you this evening. So go to your question. Let me make sure, does this, can I? It's right here. So let's go with, let's go, let's go step back. See where it says academic achievement? 25 points. So that's based on math proficiency and ELA proficiency with the S-BAC. And then for read by three, they counted the third grade twice. So that's where they did that. Now, next year, there's going to be a component added. The state has adopted NWEAs, the MAP Assessment, as the state assessment for read by three. It's still going to be the S-BAC, but they're going to add a component to show how students are moving forward with the read by, for read by three. Also, so there's growth, there's English language proficiency, there's making sure that the students who didn't pass this year, how many more can we get to pass this next year? And then there's student engagement. They're also measuring chronic absenteeism in the elementary. That's for our students. We know that students who miss school compounds with other academic issues. Students, who they count in there are those students who have been in the same school for 30 days, at least 30 days. And what they're looking at and what's listed there is those students, those numbers, those students that have missed 10% of school or more. So for us, that's, and that's like a national number. They say right away that those students who miss 18 days of school or more, they kind of catapult right into this other pot that says, now you have a 70% chance of not graduating from high school. That's why attendance is so important. And then they've added the bonus, two bonus points, and those are for the school climate survey participation. Each spring, we take a survey, social-emotional learning survey, a school climate survey. All of our students take that survey. And this year, the rate was, we had to have 55% of our students take the survey. Then that was calculated at the state and then the state assigned us a number of social workers for our schools. This next year, we have to have 75% of our students complete the survey. And that's been an issue for us. We're always in the 80s and 90s and above. So those are just some logistic pieces that go with the elementary school performance indicators.
So Sue, before you go on, is there a way for us to see what the school climate survey is from each school? Is that something?
Oh, absolutely.
Where people could find it or?
Absolutely. So at the end, I was going to have an invitation for you. Tomorrow, at the nine o'clock principals' meeting, I shouldn't say nine o'clock, that's the wrong time. At the principals' meeting tomorrow in the morning at 10:30, we are going to go over Part Two of the Nevada School Performance Survey, Nevada School Performance Data. Amber Reed, a consultant from the Nevada Department of Ed, is coming to talk about the school climate survey and how that supports, or how that information can help us with our opportunity gaps and why that's important and how that can help us with our performance. So you're invited certainly to attend. I'm going over, we have a presentation at 10 o'clock, but with our, for our English language learners. But for, at 10:30, we're going to go over some more of this, but focus on the school climate survey. But as far as the school climate surveys themselves, I can send them out electronically. This, this is really for my, end of my presentation as well. But after tonight, then I'm just going to start working on making sure that those school reports that you have in your board packet and this information is on our district website for the public to see and then attached to the individual school site. So if you just click on Eagle Valley, you can see their school report right there. And I think we want to do that too with the social-emotional learning survey. For, oh, just to go back and look at the elementary performance indicators. See the 25 points for meeting the bar, the academic achievement piece? See how they've added that importance for growth with 35 points? And actually, the English language proficiency and opportunity gaps too? Those are our growth measures as well. For the middle school, the middle school really mirrors quite a bit of what we are looking at for the elementary. It's the academic achievement through the S-BAC. But they have the addition of the end of course from last year. Now, that'll go away this year. But they have the addition of the end of course last year. And that was great for us because we had one school at 99% proficient for the end of course in the middle school and one at 100% proficient. So it was really good to have that in there for our district. Growth is the same as the elementary. English language proficiency is the same as the elementary. Opportunity gap is the same. Where there's another difference is in the student engagement piece. They now also count chronic absenteeism, but they also are looking to see how many academic plans are assigned in the middle school. So we have board policy on that. We have a process in place with our school counselors, parent signatures for a student's academic plan. So the student and the parent and the school are all on the same page with knowing what are their credit requirements in order to move from middle school to high school. And then the third one there is how many students were on track leaving middle school and ready for high school with their earning the amount of credits that they were required to earn. All right? So those, you can see the similarities, but a few subtle differences. And also here, there's a difference in the growth points. There's a little less, five less points in the growth and five more points in student engagement because of those other factors. And then the high school. The high school performance indicators are what's indicated in those circles. It's going to be about academic achievement. It's going to be about graduation rates. It's going to be about English proficiency. The addition for them, it's college and career readiness, and then student engagement. What I should say and put is that it's under construction. The bottom part, you know, the percent of proficient, the four-year grad rate versus the five-year grad rate, all of that part is under discussion currently with the state. And there will be ratings for our high schools next, after this testing season, and they should be released next year. So just know, those are the components. And there'll be information on the college and career readiness piece that I'll probably be presenting at the next board meeting at the end of January. But there's no scales, there's no scales for them in which to be evaluated. Okay. Before we really get into the reports that you have in your board packet, I just wanted to give you some examples of like a one-star, a three-star, and a five-star. When you're looking at a one-star report, what you're, you're really kind of looking to see what you're not seeing. You're not seeing necessarily a school, whole school going into the same direction. You probably have low scores in all the categories, low scores. On the far left is the index score. And remember, academic achievement was worth 25 points. That's the big number in that index score. And then they, this particular sample, that school received three out of 25 points. You'll see low scores across the board in a one-star school. When you look at a three-star school, I want to hover here for a minute. When the State Department came out to speak to the principals at that December board meeting, they said that a three-star school is doing a good job, that they are growing kids and that board members and the community and our teachers and our administrators and district office need to know that that's what's happening in a three-star school. There are things to work on. There may be a lower category than the other. Or in this particular case, if we look at, English language learners aren't cutting it as much, which probably will match the lower score with academic achievement as far as meeting the bar. And so there's specific areas that a school can work on to keep moving everything in the same direction. But the state has really emphasized that a three-star school in this new system is more difficult to reach than in what would have been our AYP system. And then, of course, a five-star school, which is where we all want to be. We all want that Oscar. We all want the Golden Globe Award. Is everything, everything's cut in the same direction. People seem to, if you look at a five-star school, you're going to be saying, that school understands the interconnectedness of each of these accountability components, that there's not some things missing. But if you notice too, there's not necessarily going to be a perfect score. So looking at our, looking at the state's data and our data, I do recognize that both of these graphs are different. But I have a reason for that. So I'll get to that in a second. So the state predicted, based on what they're telling us, they predicted that most of the schools would be two stars. For elementary, that, this is the elementary now we're focusing on. They predicted that most of the schools would be two stars and their prediction and their actual ratings came out fairly similar. Most of the schools are two stars and then it goes with three-star, four-star, et cetera. In the Carson City School District, we have two two-star schools. I wanted to set it up this way so that you could see where our schools ranked in that five-star system. We have two two-star schools, Borderwick Elementary School, or, sorry, Fremont Elementary School and Empire Elementary School. Both of those principals were here, sharing with the board their plan of action for improvement. We have three, three-star schools. Borderwick Bray Elementary School, Mark Twain, and Al Seeliger Elementary School, and then one four-star elementary school. Mark, Carson Montessori is not on here because it was not rated this past year. To be rated, you have to have an end size, a number, student number of 10 in each of these categories. And you have to have scores in the student achievement piece and in the growth piece. And if you notice, they have student achievement data in their report. But in 2015-16, they had a school-wide test irregularity, which resulted in no data for their school last year. So last year during testing season, we went over and provided technical support to the school and they were able to take the test correctly and receive results. But they don't have the growth data because you have to take the test twice to have growth data. So that first year with the test irregularity, they didn't have any results. So last year was as if it was their first year in taking the test. I predict next year, they'll be on this grid and they'll have results.
And that was my question. Is there any kind of repercussion from the state for the testing irregularity or is it just kind of like old harmless?
Well, the test irregularity was submitted to the state. The state did review it. They felt that the district's support of Carson Montessori and how we were going to help them rectify the issue was sufficient. And it wasn't a pattern of practice through other testing cycles with that school. They just happened to take a practice test instead of the real test, which didn't give them the results. But nobody realized it because it looked like everything was smooth and it was reported smooth until we just didn't get results and we started inquiring. Okay. So if we were to take this, this, my chart here and set it up the same way as the state, we would have our largest column, our highest column, would be the three-star schools. So you can see the majority of the schools for the state are two-star schools, but the majority of the schools for our district are three-star. So we're ahead of the state in that regard. For middle school, the same, looks a little different, but still, the highest numbers are two-star and then three-star and it looks a little different with the four and five. With Carson Middle School and Eagle Valley Middle School, they are both four-star rated schools. And if you happen to add up their points, you notice that one is probably a 71.5 and one is a 72. They're very, very close. And I attribute that to the work that we've been doing, starting with our Race to the Top Grant, our Learner Center model. They, it started with them the earliest. So I really anticipate growth in our elementary schools because we've moved that model to the elementary and we're in that real deep, you know, development stage with the elementary now. And if we were to take that graph there and set it up the same way as the state middle school graph, then you would see we would have one big tall line in the level four, in the four-star rating column and no others because that's what we are. We're a four-star middle school group. I would have liked to today, but I think, I don't think that the technology here in the community center, it's always a bit dicey. But I would like to invite you to go onto the State Department website. When you get onto the State Department website and you, you'll see buttons at the bottom, you can click on the NSPF button, you can click on the Nevada Report Card button, and it will give you a wealth of information. Here, that's stagnant, those numbers are stagnant, but when you click on it, it just kind of, it kind of, it kind of moves and it just kind of, it's more, more interactive now than the state website has ever been before regarding accountability data. And that's why now that we know that we're finally settled in into an accountability measure, I'm going to be putting all of this information up on our website with the help of our technology department, my assistant, and our public relations, P I, our P I, our Public Information Officer. And then again, I'd like to invite you, if you've, I know it's a little bit short notice, but if you have time tomorrow at 10:30 and you'd like to hear what the state has to say about our social emotional learning data, climate schools, climate data, and how that can help us with our, the knowledge, what we're going to do with that to help us with the opportunity gaps, you are certainly welcome. We'll have leadership teams along with the principals at that meeting, and it should be about 40 minutes. So do you have any questions of this model?
I just have a, were you saying that you were going to put the PowerPoint in addition to the results on the website so that parents and if we wanted to review it, we could bring it up and look at it at a different time also?
Yes, and there, there has to be an explanation, I can't really just put up there the, the, the reports.
Right, right.
You know, so.
That was, that was my question.
Sure.
And so, you know, the, the data that you have given us on, on each of the schools. And I keep going back to this, I look, I know the Montessori school didn't have any data from previous year. But their current data. And I want to, and we've gone over the math and the E L A, they're, between them and Borderwick Bray, they, they kind of match each other. But the, the read by, are ready by grade three, I mean, they're off the scale. Do they have a success for all reading program or not?
I believe that they don't have one, they, they don't have one specific program adopted over there.
Okay, and I know that the other board members have concerns for the year. Is this an, have you gone over and taken a look at what they do and for reading, I mean, they're so far ahead, it would, to me, I'd be over there finding out what's, what's going on.
So in December, I spent probably the whole entire morning with Jessica going through the school and working with her on some upcoming testing topics, but also in providing her guidance from the district, but also talking to her about what they do, how do they do it, and so bringing back ideas. Are also our learner-centered model approach that we're using now with the elementary. Mr. Brigham will probably, will be here in February to give you an update as to what's going on. Starting January 8th, we have about one-third of our elementary teachers piloting the new English Language Arts learning targets and assessments. And they have the freedom to use what materials work best for them. We have lots of resources in our schools, and so therefore during that 90-minute reading block, they have the autonomy to incorporate writing, incorporate the reading piece, and also language development, phonics. So there's some changes on the horizon, Mr. Surosek, that we're in the middle of, that we'll be getting feedback. Those teachers aren't going to give feedback on a program like the folks did with science, they're going to give us feedback on those learning targets and the benchmarks, and let us know what they need to teach English Language Arts. And then once that's completed, then we'll go through an adoption.
So that 90 minutes though, let me see if I understand, so the SFA 90 minutes in the Read by Three thing where you, they don't have to use the materials and stuff, they can use other materials during that period?
Or they can use those materials and structure their time different, rather than what's been prescribed from SFA. And we've been in conversations with Success for All to know that there are changes that are coming. That they have, you know, I, I, I don't want to be premature because, in what I say to you, because it, we just started the pilot this week. The teachers who signed up to do the pilot, we asked as many as whoever wanted to do it, do it, instead of limiting it to X number per school. We just said whoever would like to take a look at the new standards, because when we were going through the curriculum development, they asked me, do you, do we develop this, do we develop our learning targets around it as success for all, or do we develop them around the standards? We develop them around the standards, not a program.
And I guess my question is, how are we handling the contract then, I mean, are you maintaining this contract with SFA to have the days they come into all of the sites two or three times next year? Or how are you addressing that?
We will determine that when we go through the adoption process to see what materials we're going to look at. So if SFA, if success for all is part of the picture, then there will be some type of contract. If they are not in the picture, then there won't be a contract. If there is partial, you know, because our curiosity corner, our, our, our pre-K programming is spot on with the standards, with the materials and the resources that we see, receive from that. And talking to kindergarten teachers, they already know too that we're pretty close. There, there may be a few tweaks, it's with our upper grades that, that we may not have the amount of horsepower. So that's why we are going through the curriculum adoption, we're going through the process, just like what we did with the middle schools and the high school, is that we rolled out in the elementary, we went through the math, then after we rolled out the learning targets and the assessments, we developed, we adopted a math program. And we're, we, it'll be time to look at reading as well, English Language Arts. It's one of our older adoptions, so we're going to want to look at that. We have to keep in mind, and I have a slide for that, and that can be at another time. But in two, before we started Nevada School Performance Framework, before we went to SBAK, before we didn't have anything, but we had the CRT, we had AYP, all the data showed that all of our schools were going up each year. So we stuck with something until we could find out if it could even work with the new expectations. So now it's time to reevaluate that. So if you're asking, is it a closed book, no. Are we going to go through the process and see where the process goes? Yes, we need the feedback from the teachers before I make decisions.
Okay, just, oh, go ahead, Ryan.
I've obviously been critical of SFA sometimes too, but can you speak to, because what I see here, especially if we're bringing Montessori into this, is their free and reduced lunch population is like less than 20%. And just about every training we've had or gone to, that is the greatest barrier to education, so I think that's a really important distinction, especially for us to keep in mind. If we're going to start directly comparing, and then I'm sure you all, especially Mr. Medina, Mrs. Kima, can speak to the importance of just how many words these children in different income levels here before they even start school, much less, you know, support they're getting at home, so. I guess I'd caution that and open it if you, if you want to speak to that too, because I don't know that they're the best direct comparison for us.
And you know what, Mr. Green, what I think it would be a good idea when Mr. Brigham is presenting our mid-year report for Read by Three, where we're at, and what's, what's happened, and you know, what are some, what are some changes and, you know, that sort of thing, I think it'd probably be a good idea for him to bring in like the, the number of words that students come to school with that are fluent versus not.
And Ryan, I bring that up because what I said before, Borderwick Bray, which has a number of free and reduced lunch, and they're way off the scale, a Title I school, goes hand in hand with the Montessori, and that's why I'm saying there's something that goes on that needs to be looked at. Anyway, the next question would be on the middle schools. And I know you, you know, we're talking about four-star schools, but in proficiencies in math, and we've talked about this before, that, you know, and of course, and, or whatever. When I look at their scores, they're not good, I mean, we're in 22, I mean, what, what are we doing to, and I know we have the learner-centered model, but have we increased, you know, the rigor in, in the math, you know, going forward?
So, so to address that, we are looking at offering geometry next year with our younger students in middle school to add more rigor for some of our highest performing students. This math issue is perplexing the entire state. I am on a committee, we've only met once, we're going to meet next week again, where they are trying to solve this, resolve this middle school math problem, because it is, it is a, an issue in that it's, schools are low performing across the state. As far as why is it in middle school have they been performing so low, and then in, in the high school level, they pick back up. Now, Dr. Medina probably has had more discussion about this with the groups that he's involved in, so I'm going to let him answer.
I would also remind you that this year, we've adopted new curriculum for math for both the elementary as well as the middle school. So the rigor, the curriculum is totally different from what it was previously.
So the teachers are learning, is what you're saying?
Yeah, well, not just learning, but they're also implementing.
So the proficiency score should go up accordingly?
I, I would expect them to go up next year with the math because we have a program with more horsepower that matches the required standards at this point. So I would expect that alone, plus the commitment of the teachers and the, the communication in their PLCs and working with students and the things that we have in place, will, our scores will go up. But on the side note, on a bigger picture, the state too is, is, across the state, this is kind of where the, where an issue lies within our state. And so they're looking at ways to bring additional training and opportunities to our teachers who may not be as confident in teaching math.
On that, sorry, on that note, do we have an issue, for lack of a better word, of, of math competency within our district? Do we have a lot of teachers who are teaching math that don't have as strong of a background as other district states, or, I know it's a hard question to answer, but I mean.
It is, so some of the things that we're doing is through RPDP, we are offering a, we have a math cohort, and we have a couple of middle school teachers in there, but it's primary elementary teachers, and just watching what's happening with those teachers and their knowledge about teaching math, I would put every one of them in the middle school because of what they're learning. And from the different instructors from UNR, from RPDP, and so we're, we're focusing on that because it is an issue, I think it is.
That's why I bring it up, is I mean, when we hear about we have a teaching shortage, we have a substitute shortage, it makes sense that we're doing the best we can to fill gaps. And I'm just wondering if that's one of those gaps where we're getting hit hard.
And, and that's the, the plan, Jackie McKeon is leading that group, and they've gone through, I could bring you the list to show you the kind of courses that they're taking these teachers, and it's for credit with UNR, and it's, or SUU, I should say, Southern University, Utah University. And there, we need to get more cohorts like that going, because that's, it's a very powerful group. It's kind of like this National Board Certification, when you get a group like that with some high-powered professional development, they're, they're, we're looking at their data in the classroom.
I guess I would just kind of add that one of the things we were hearing prior to the adoption of the math curriculum was a lot of these teachers saying they didn't have math curriculum. And so I think that maybe with kind of a uniform curriculum, they're going to actually identify some of those gaps that maybe they hadn't been teaching or whatnot, and so I think that might help as well.
Or that's the structure of that, of our curriculum work, you know, Dr. Medina and those STEM coaches have gone through those, developed those learning targets and those benchmarks. That, that holds people accountable to be at a certain place by a certain time, and being able to put your data in and, and then talking about that at your PLCs. Because that benchmark, before we had pacing guides where we wanted people to be at a certain place, but we didn't have the accountability measure of a benchmark assessment for them to give their students and say, okay, we got this far, now let's see how we're doing in smaller intervals than a semester's data point. Any other questions?
I have just one, yeah, additional comment, let's go to the high school. And we could go both Carson and Pioneer. And college and career readiness that you pointed out, you know, is one of the, the elements that is not in the other part of this, but the first thing was the ACT. Now, and I, I'm going to bring this up tonight in future agenda items, because Joe brought this up. There was, I'm not sure who came forward, I think one of the VPs from Carson High, that there is some kind of a, a course that teaches kids, because they kept saying, well, the kids aren't just taking timed tests and all this kind of thing. But there is a way to get our students prepared, because the ACT is an indicator, are we meeting standards? And so the, my, my question would be, you know, that 18 number is not great. What are we doing now to change that? Is that preparatory course in place or not?
So the teachers have worked together to break that up in all their courses, to say that when I'm in English, I have a certain amount of time where I can do ACT-like practice pieces in there, that's one way that they're working on that. Also, I think it's next week, Tasha Fuson and I are meeting with a potential donor to pay for our 10th graders to take the ACT this year and, and, and roll that out so that the 11th grade year is not their first year at seeing a test like that. Because a lot of students, and what the teachers are also working on is the timing. For example, a department chair up there said that his daughter came home from middle school and said she was the last person done taking her math test. And normally you would say, well, that's okay if you're taking your time and you needed the time and you wanted to work on that. But his thought was, oh, no, she'll never be prepared for the ACT because of the timing. Our students are used to being given, if you're still working hard on a test, you get extra time. That's how the SBAK is, that's how the CRTs have been, that's how the end of course has been, and then you get to an ACT test, and people don't know how to manage their time. So that's another strategy, that there are kids that are capable, but they're not managing their time on a test well, because they don't know how to, and the teachers are practicing that with students. So there's the management piece, there's this actual studying on what the test is about, and then there's looking at a strategy of making it sure, making sure that it's not the first time our students have ever seen that test.
Another thing to, to keep in mind, and I would strongly caution against making the same mistake that we made with the high school proficiency exam. The greatest indicator of a kid's performance on the ACT is what level of math, what level of English, what level level of social studies, what level of science they make it to. So if you spend all of your time teaching high school proficiency math to prepare kids for the high school proficiency exam, chances are they're not going to pass the, the high school proficiency exam as they would if they would have took Algebra II and Algebra III, or Algebra II and pre-calc and calculus. So you got to be careful with focusing on practicing for the test, because then you're, you're utilizing time that could be spent moving kids further along. And that's what the high school has been doing now with every kid starts off in Algebra I, their ninth grade year, for all of our subjects, whether it's the kids going down the college track, or whether they're going down the CTE track, we're trying to push higher levels of science, trying to get kids into chemistry and physics, so that that way, when they take the ACT, they could be successful.
And Dr. Medina had some correlation studies, I think about a year ago we were up here, and we'll probably do that after each ACT to say, what level of math does a student have to be at to score, be at, to score the best? And that is, that is absolutely true. We don't want to put, we don't want to put test prep classes in place of the core content. We need to get those kids up the ladder.
I agree. But it was presented that we also need to teach them, this is a timed test which is different.
Yes.
And you don't get, you don't ignore that, but you don't focus, you don't have to dwell on it, but you do have to get them ready to say, this is, this is life. How do you adjust?
Absolutely right. Which is why I think that whole, you know, you're an English I teacher, you're an English II teacher, you know, just English III and English IV, making sure that in all four levels of English, and rhetoric, or whatever else they're taking, that there is some, some time to address some of the strategies, just like the elementary does. You know, with the S-Back, you've got your technology teachers who are well aware of the technology requirements for that assessment. And they make sure that those students know how to drag and drop, they make sure they know how to highlight, they make sure they know how to read double screens, those kinds of things to make sure that it works. A timed test is one of those things. You, if you're not used to giving timed tests, the teachers have now been trying to put in some timed tasks, so that the students can kind of get a feel of what that's like. So that's not the first time, when they're a junior. So you're right. It, you know, we've got to prep them in all kinds of ways, but we also don't want to miss out on making sure that they end our system with the highest math class possible.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
All right, thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 15. Informational update on the final 2017 cohort graduation rates for the Carson City School District. Dr. Ricky Medina.
So while Sue's getting that up on the screen, last time I was here to talk about grad rates, you all recommended additional data. So in your board packets, you should have the breakdowns for the last three years for all the school districts in the state. You also should have a breakdown of every school, in every high school in the state, what their pass rates were for their overall school, what they were for their individual subgroups. So, and you have those for FRL, for IEP, LEP, gender, the different ethnicities. Okay, so just a little bit of review. So the formula that's used, in the numerator, it's the number of students that earn a regular high school diploma. So that counts as a regular diploma, an honors diploma, an advanced diploma, and an adult diploma. What it doesn't count is an adjusted diploma, which in the past, students used to get adjusted diplomas if they had an IEP, and their IEP stipulated that they were going for an adjusted diploma. It also doesn't count students that are working on a high school equivalency certificate. So if you get an adult diploma, you're a graduate. If you get a high school equivalency certificate, you're a non-graduate. The way that you, the bottom number, the way that you, every student that enrolled during the 13, 14 school year, they become part of that cohort. Or if they came, so if you signed up for high school for the first time during 13, 14, you're assigned a cohort graduation year, and that year never changes. So if you're here, you go to Europe for three years and you come back, if you were just in school for a week when, before you left, you still count as that cohort's graduate. Something to keep in mind, in the past, when the cohort graduation rate first rolled out, it basically stretched from October 1st of the 2013 until the end of the school year, the 2017. And then school districts had until, like, over the summer up through October 1st of the next year, to track down kids, make sure that our numbers were correct. There were some changes at the federal level, where now, kids can enter that cohort up until October 1st of that 2017. So basically, if a kid shows up on Sam Santillo's doorstep that came in from Fresno, they went to school for four years, and they don't have any credits, and they show up at Adult Ed before October 1st, they get entered into our cohort. And the reason why I mention that is because in Sue's presentation, it had the four-year cohort and the five-year cohort. That creates a problem, when you look at the five-year cohorts across the state, all of them go down. And that's because kids that enter in afterwards, usually they're credit deficient, and they tend to make your numbers go down. Students that transfer out of your cohort, those are students that, they're going to attend another school that primarily gives high school diplomas. So if they are attending a trade school that only attends, or only gives high school equivalency certificates, they still count towards your cohort. If they leave the country, they exit your cohort, or if they pass away. So this is what our, our three-year trend looks like. So, last time, Mr. Cassioppo asked, what does it look like nationally? So in the 2015, for the class of 2015, nationally, the grad rate was 83.2. In 2016, it was 84.1%. Both of those were records for the national average. So if you look at us, we started off, 2015, we were down at 74%. 2017, we're up to 84%. And during this time, kids have been held to increased standards, because we're now requiring them to take that ninth grade algebra course. There's more, I would say that grade inflation is more of a concern in some of our other districts. But in our district, because we're following those learning targets, kids are expected to meet those standards. I put up Clark and Washoe, because their demographics are most similar to ours, as well as, I put the Nevada average. Okay, I'm going to give the grad rates by subpopulation. You have some of these numbers in your packet for the individual schools. I left off the other ethnicities, because there, there's not enough students in those subpopulations for it to, to be a valid number. Sometimes when, when I go to like state-level meetings, we'll have like one or two African-American students that graduate, and it looks like our graduation rate's 100%. And it's because we only have a few kids in those subpops. So our Hispanic subpop last year, 88.1, 88.2% of those kids graduated. That's a little bit higher than our white subpop. And part of that is due to the way that, our, our growing number of our Hispanic population and the way that ethnicity is identified for our school district, or for federally. Our FRL numbers, 90% of our kids that were never FRL during high school graduate. For kids that are, were ever FRL, so we call it ever FRL for the grad rate, if you were free and reduced lunch for your ninth grade year, and of the other three years you weren't, you show up in the ever FRL population. Or if your senior year, the last week of school, you became FRL, you show up in the ever FRL. So this is an area, and I also point out that this ever FRL tracks kind of closely with Pioneer's graduation rate numbers. Pioneer, because of their population, they're considered 100% free and reduced lunch. So that went into effect last year, it's also in effect this year. The overall numbers, so we had district-wide, 538 kids that graduated. I'm going to talk about these 103 kids that didn't graduate. We also had 154 kids that came and played with us for a few days, and then transferred, moved on to other schools, other places to get their diplomas. I want to point out that for Carson Adult, they graduated 17 kids, which is kind of an amazing feat for an adult high school. This is something that, in the past, I would say there wasn't a sense of urgency. It was kind of like at Carson High, if the, the kids weren't following the rules, it was like, okay, let's just send them to Pioneer. Pioneer was like, okay, let's just send them to Adult Ed. And if they showed up, they showed up, but if they didn't, nobody really, it didn't really matter. Now, Carson High is trying to implement programs to keep their kids. They have their CHOP program, they have our, our truancy officer out trying to round up kids, trying to get kids to stay at their school. They've expanded their distance learning options to try to make it so that kids don't go to Pioneer. And then Pioneer is doing the, the same exact thing. They're trying to do whatever they can to make sure that kids don't end up at Adult Ed. But when Sam gets them over at Adult Ed, yeah, he's doing whatever he can to get them graduated with their cohort. So these 103 kiddos that didn't graduate, so 56 of them enrolled in, were enrolled in Carson Adult Education as of October 1st. So these are students that we still have an opportunity to get them to graduate. They won't show up in these numbers, but they'll show up in the five-year grad rate. 10 of those students earned their high school equivalency certificates. So one of the battles that they have to wage at Adult Ed is that, if a kid shows up and they get their adult, their certificate, and they go off and get a job, there's not much of an incentive for them to come back to get their adult education. So, but these 10 students, they got the certificate that they needed to get to get, to enter into the workforce. We had six students that remained at Carson High School. So these are fifth-year seniors, or fifth-year seniors that had IEPs. Four of them earned alternative diplomas as of October 1st. So these students will likely, with the high school proficiency exam going away, and with the requirements for the end-of-course assessments for previous classes going away, those four alternative diplomas will likely turn into regular high school diplomas. Pioneer also had three fifth-year seniors that remained, that are working towards their graduation. We had 38 students that, what I would call true non-graduates. These are students that kind of left our school district, or they're in our Carson community, but they're no longer affiliated with the Carson City School District. As a district, we've been trying to go after these students. My truancy officer, Alice Valdez, has been amazing. I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled that we were able to, to hire the individual that we were able to hire. She's out and about for first thing in the morning before the sun comes up, and till well in the afternoon, trying to track down kids. We're actually, at our last SARB hearing, our last SARB meeting, one of the things that we recognized was that Carson City, we, we have resources that are available, but oftentimes we don't know what those different resources are. And that there's different community partners that are out there. There, there was three of us that were, are offering parent engagement courses. So the, I thought that came out of that meeting was, what can we do to work more as a community to get kids back into school? So at the beginning of next month, our deputy district attorney is putting together a symposium where different community groups are going to get together. So like Carson City School District will have an hour-long kind of panel presentation, where we'll share kind of what it is that we do, what are some of the resources that we need, what are some of the things that we struggle with. And then other groups, like the Boys and Girls Club, different community organizations will share out what they do. So that way, we could begin to kind of combine our resources. And I see that having an impact, trying to go after these 38 kids. Yeah. What questions do you all have?
When, when we, when we do our, our citywide graduation rate, we're just quite literally adding Pioneer and Carson High and dividing by two, correct?
No, so the district-wide, it's Carson High, Pioneer, and Carson Adult Ed.
Okay.
All three.
But I mean, I guess, I mean, we're taking their percentages, so like Pioneer's graduate percentage plus Carson High's, adding and dividing, is it that simple?
No, it's adding up these numbers right here.
Adult Ed.
So 466 plus 55 plus 17 equals 538.
Okay, so...
Dividing that over the cohort.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Because otherwise, if, if Carson High is, was 100% and Adult Ed was zero, we would come out to 50.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, to see if the, because that wouldn't make sense.
Yeah, yeah. So we don't do the percentages, we do the actual numbers.
So when we're comparing, anywhere I was going, when we're comparing to other counties, that's how they're doing it, too, are the ones with only one high school just have the one deal. But like, I guess a Clark for the extreme, they're literally taking like thousands of students and doing it in that fashion?
Correct. Yeah. And, and so that's why, and, and some of the bigger counties, you see bigger gaps between schools. So you might see some of the more affluent schools, or schools in certain neighborhoods, I'll say, that have really high graduation rates, and then some that have rates that are really, really low.
Ricky, I have a question, and you might not know the answer to this. I'm just thinking, so we, Pioneer High, you had three students that stayed, so that left three, 10 non-graduates. Do we know how many of those kids are going to go on to the adult education program? Are we tracking that, or trying to find a way to recapture them?
Yeah. So I would say that my biggest challenge is trying to keep Sam from stealing kids. Sam's all about getting as many kids as possibly he could to graduate. If a, a third grader showed up at Adult Ed, or if he bumped into a third grader at the grocery store, he's trying to get them into their program. And so we're trying to, to get as many of the, Carson High's trying to keep their kids, Pioneer's trying to keep their kids, and Adult Education is trying to get as many kids as they can.
That's just, that's my question about the kids that they don't keep. So is there a mechanism in place for Sam to kind of get that information and start working his magic, basically?
Yes. And, and a lot of these kids, like when I mentioned these 38, and, and that's the reason why I brought up like SARB. Tomorrow, we have SARB hearings with, with eight different students. And in the past, we would have kind of either written them a ticket and then kind of wiped our hands of it. Now, we're trying to see what can we do to, to keep these kids. And sometimes there are kids that are really adamant, like I don't, absolutely don't want to be in school. But we're trying to figure out what resources or what supports, how could we be creative to get you to graduate? Can we get you to go to Adult Ed at nighttime, so you don't have to be around other people, or trying to do things differently?
I think you guys too have worked really hard to find out where those transferred outs went to, which has been real important to that, that number. And that's deeply appreciated too.
Mr. Santello meets, I don't think monthly, but I know quarterly, with the high school and the guidance department, they meet as a team to look at, where, where are students at risk, and who might, and they do, they invite the parent in, and they'll have like an intervention where they talk about, here's Pioneer, it's not working for you here at the high school, but we've got Pioneer here, we have Adult Ed here, and we're all in the same room together. And then they have like a, a group of students, kind of like a SARB hearing, but for academics with this attendance piece. It's not a hearing, it's just kind of a group, I would call it an intervention, to bring in the families. in the families and the students to say, what do you think would work for you? Here's Carson Online, here's Adult Ed, here's Pioneer. And so there's a scheduled event now, that's happened in the last year and a half, that Mr. Santello's a part of.
Well, and the other thing, what I was pointing out, though, is sometimes people just transfer to California, and before, we never tracked them down to find out if they really did transfer to California, and now we are because it counts in our cohort. So that extra work has been appreciated, too, because I think that's brought up our numbers, too.
Yeah, I'm very grateful for our office managers and our registrars for tracking kids down, because it's really, it's kind of an accounting nightmare trying to keep track of all these students.
Dr. Medina, thank you very much for just presenting this, but what you're doing going forward, it's kind of amazing work, so, thank you. Okay, agenda item 16. Approval and Consent Agenda?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda is submitted.
Second?
Motion and a second. Public comment, see none.
I have a discussion, not discussion, but I have disclosure that I have a peculiary interest in part of the consent agenda. So I will now be voting.
Say it again.
I'm shocked I got adopted.
I can say that word every time, right up until the time I have to use it.
We have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item 17, informational items for discussion only. Any questions on the informational items? We're still scheduled for the.
I was just going to point out the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on the 18th.
And that agenda for that meeting will be sent out.
Mr. President, yes, we've been working on that. It has been submitted in draft form to the folks at the city, and we were just waiting for them to provide us with the items that they intended to add to the agenda.
I wanted to have, I guess, I'd call it a policy discussion on board expectations for board officers, say, president, president-elect, clerk. So this way, people, you know, when you're considering, hey, do I want to be clerk? Do I want to be president? You know, what are the expectations? It is a little, you know, generally, we all have our thoughts on, like we discussed tonight, on what's, you know, what's important, what isn't, what, you know. But I think if we had something as a policy, it helps shape these discussions a little better. So I'd like to have board discussions or policy discussions related to that. And just on a separate item, I don't know if I, I'm not asking for an item yet on a future meeting, but I would like, at some point when it's appropriate, to have the two principals from Empire and Fremont come back to us and let us know how their efforts are going, you know, kind of, you know, are they, are they where they think they were going to be at this time, or, you know, what's working well, where are they adjusting? I think that was some interesting conversation we had with them, and I'd just like to see how it's going for them.
And see how that extra time with those is working for them and the teachers.
Mr. Cassioppa, would it help to see if Mr. Brown could come and share his success on how he got to four stars?
Yes. No, I agree, I think so. You know, we were at, we were at the NASB meeting, at the NASB conference, and I just, the one, the one fellow from, I can never remember his name, but I just remember Boone That resonates, yeah. He was interesting, I mean, he was a dynamic speaker, but what resonated with me was, he said they were an underachieving district in a, basically, an impoverished area, and they took their district from, you know, from dismal results to kind of a shining star. And so, you know, when we talk about these discussions on what our state's doing and whatnot, and what schools are doing, you know, I'd like to reach out, you know, however we can do that, but I'm always interested to reach out a little farther and find out what other districts are doing.
Could I, I just would suggest, kind of in that, in that same line of thinking, that maybe to be proactive, we should look at all of the schools' plans. I mean, certainly Empire and Fremont are going to be at the forefront because of their star rating, but if we're always waiting until a school's underperforming before we take interest, is it, you know what I mean? So maybe to keep that focus on there and just kind of keep us informed of what our schools are doing when parents and teachers call us.
Didn't we do a workshop kind of like that with some of the different schools that came and presented their plans a couple years ago?
I was going to say, it's been longer, it's been a bit of a longer time than we probably realized.
And that would be good, maybe we could get a workshop.
I think that's a workshop.
Yeah, before the, I mean, in the next month, because we, you know, the S-Backs are going to be upon us, but what are they doing? What's different? It's going to make a difference.
What are the trenches?
And for me, I'd like for the next meeting, for Tasha, Jason, to come here and talk about the ACT. They made suggestions, or people on their staff made suggestions in prepping these kids. Tell us what they're doing, how they're being held accountable. Do they monitor personally? Do they go into classrooms? Do any of us go into their classrooms to look at what's been talked about? If there's, you know, using part of the class time to prep the kids for a timed exam, who follows up? Who monitors that? So maybe at the next meeting, before this, I want to do this before the ACT, to give these kids a little more of a chance. Okay, there's any other future agenda items?
Stacy, take your job.
Mike, you don't want to get too good at that. Do a good job.
I'm not good at focusing in on what we're doing.
Okay, if there's no further future agenda items, this meeting is now adjourned.